Good evening. Thank you all for coming. Welcome to the Dairy Copper School Board Meeting for Tuesday, January 19th. This evening, we will start with our public hearing on the proposed 2021-2022 budget. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. We do have handouts up here on the table. Please help yourselves. And I do believe there are wipes if folks are going to come up to speak that go ahead and wipe it down. Okay, go ahead, please. Jan, you're all set?
Sure. There are copies of the PowerPoint that's going to be presented this evening, as well as a summary page of the proposed budget and expenditures and revenues, which would be on the single page. So that's all there for your information if you would like. So we are here to review the proposed budget for the 2021-2022 district budget as our public hearing presentation. I want to just give a little bit of a background on our budget process and development, which always starts, we're already talking about and planning, the following year's budget, always a year ahead. So when we were working on the 2122 budget, that started last year. We work into the summer and develop our planning and our proposed budget for the following year. We do a draft presentation. We work with all of our directors, principals, administration, and present it to our school board and fiscal advisory committee and have many, many meetings on, from the first draft of the budget to our final recommended proposed budgets. A lot of really great conversation, dialogue, data that's distributed between all of the parties that are involved in creating the budget. And so I just want to make sure that everybody's acknowledged for all the work that they've done on the budget. Obviously, the administration, school board, and I would like to name the fiscal advisory members. They volunteer a lot of their time to work with the dairy school district and provide a thoughtful budget for our students and staff. And those members are Carl Liccardo, Gus Kukosa, Bruce Kling, Glenn Manchester, Ryan Myers, Dr. John Moody, Noreen Tabor-Walkup, and Neil Wetherby. And they gave an extraordinary amount of time and give a great amount of input into the budgets. And many of them have been on here for several years. So they're very familiar with the budget process, which makes it a lot easier to go through the process. When we're looking at developing our budget, we just wanted to give everybody a sense of where Derry is in comparison to other districts around us. So Derry is the third largest district in the state. So we are only behind Manchester and Nashua. And you can see that as of October 1, the numbers that the state put out, Derry had 274 kindergarteners, 1,638 elementary students, 1,140 middle students, for a total enrollment of 3,052 actual students enrolled as of October 1. Now, what's interesting about this year, due to COVID, we had quite a number of students, I think it was an additional 83 students, that chose to be strictly homeschooled this year that are not part of our dairy curriculum or our programming. And so, and those students aren't doing the, weren't even doing the remote program. They were strictly homeschooled. So that's why our numbers are down a little bit for October 1 as compared to maybe a prior year. And we also look at, where is the dairy school district in comparison to other districts in the state? And we try to just keep it in our, in our surrounding areas. And again, information from the Department of Ed is typically always one fiscal year behind. This is the first time that we had area enrollment from them that was in the current year. So I was surprised that they had the October 1 of 2020 numbers for that, that prior chart. So for the average cost per pupil, it's calculated always based on the year before. And it's all of the programming, general ed, special education, all the programming, and compares your cost to surrounding districts. So we wanted to show you, if we took some of this around, you could see where Sanborn, Lanandary, Concord. And then the state average for the average cost per pupil would be 17,104 elementary and 15,938 for middle. And then Derry falls right below state average. And then you can see that there are other school districts around us who have a lower cost per pupil. And really, that's just comparative information for you. When we go through the budget process, one of the first things that we do, and we are looking at staffing or programs, we take all of our current students and we promote them to the next grade. And then we calculate how many classrooms we think we'll need for the next fiscal year. And this year, we used data from the methodology of simply promoting students from their current grade to their next grade. And we also use data from Davis Demographics, who we contracted with to do a demographic study last fall. And so in looking at both of those numbers, projecting for 2122, we looked at classroom size and we have school board recommended maximum capacity for classrooms. And that's how we determine in our elementary levels, how many sections of classrooms we would need. And we either add staffing or we reduce staffing. And so, and we also look at all of our programs and every area of the budget to determine what is the best budget for the next following year. So we've broken down this presentation sort of by department of our budget. And on this slide, we're just going to talk about the staffing changes that are being proposed for the next fiscal school year. We are proposing to add one special education deep, special education teacher in our DEEP program, which is for our three and four-year-old students, for our Derry Early Education Program. And that would be a cost of $98,589. And for all of these salary amounts, that includes salary and benefits. And we're also proposing adding one special education teacher for a South Range Elementary School. When we also look at the budget, we look at areas where we may need to make some changes or reductions in addition to the additions that we may have for our proposed budget. And we know that anytime we have to move forward with any type of reduction, that's very difficult for, for everybody and the budget. So all of these were done with a lot of thought and a collaborative process with all of the staff members, fiscal advisory, school board. So the first position would be to reduce one elementary classroom teacher. That is the one position that is a net position after we took into consideration the classroom enrollment, adding, adding staff and reducing staff based on student enrollment. There was a net reduction of one classroom teacher at the elementary level, and the school would be to be determined. Also recommending to reduce the one district librarian. Each of the schools has a library assistant, and this would be the library, the district librarian. We are also proposing to reduce two ESOL assistants. And for those that don't know, ESOL is for our students whose first language is not English. And so we have three ESOL teachers and three ESOL assistants. And based on student enrollment, we're recommending reducing two of the assistant positions. We're also recommending reducing two home-to-school coordinators that are district-wide positions. With the increases in those two positions and the proposed reductions, it is a net reduction on the budget for staffing of $264,059. And those, that includes salary and benefits. We also want to talk about benefits for the district. Each year, we receive a guaranteed maximum rate for our health insurance. And we always get that in the fall. And so we use that for our budgeting purposes. But we don't get our actual health insurance rate increase or rates until after the budget has been voted on in March. So unfortunately, the timing doesn't really work well when we're doing budgeting. But to be consistent, we always use the guaranteed maximum rate. So for this year, it's 6.1%, which means the insurance will not increase more than 6.1%. So we use that as a budgeting number. So on our budget for health insurance, it's a total increase on our budget of $409,363.86. For our dental insurance, there is going to be no increase on the rate. And based on the enrollment now for dental, there would be actually a decrease on the budget next year of $43,655.03. And both of these areas are based on current employees' current plans. Now, the last area for benefits that's really important and has been a large impact on our budget would be New Hampshire Retirement. Now, as you know, New Hampshire retirement rates are set by New Hampshire Retirement. That's not something the district sets. It's not something that we can opt out of. So the rates are set, they are set for three years. And for next year, the teacher New Hampshire retirement rate is going to be 21.02%, which is an increase of 3.22%, which the effect on next year's budget is $624,648. The employee rate for New Hampshire Retirement is increasing 2.89% for an increase on our budget of $119,505. Now, the employee rate would be for employees who are not teachers. So those would be custodians, maintenance, technology, administration, secretaries and assistant, administrative assistants. So again, in the past, New Hampshire Retirement or the state used to contribute to some of the cost for the teacher rate that we, the district would have to pay. And they don't contribute anything. And that's been going on for several years now. But it's been a huge impact for all district budgets because at the local level, we have to make up the increased costs that are coming down to us that are now in our budgets. As a note, that $624,000 is based on the budget that we are moving forward, which does not include the Teachers' Warren article. So the $624 is just because of the new rate applied to the current teacher staffing salaries as of 2021. Now, the district is also recommending adding a new NECC classroom at the middle school level. NECC is our New England Center for Children. For, it's a program that provides comprehensive services for our students with autism. We currently have classrooms at Derry Village, South Range, Ernest P. Barca. And we also have one middle school level program at Gilbert H. Hood. And that would be an increase on our budget of approximately $352,992. And this is for our students who are currently in our programs and are going to be moving up from the fifth grade level, going up to our middle school. And this is, we feel very necessary to add another classroom. If those students, if we did not have a place for those students in our program, many of those students would likely be outplaced at a much larger cost to the district. And we want to have our students in their homeshows, with their peers, and try to keep the same programming that they've had at the elementary level. And then when they move on to Pinkerton, because they've implemented the NECC program at the high school level as well. Now, I just want to bring to everyone's attention, when it comes to the high school level, grades nine through 12. We talk a lot about Pinkerton, and we talk about Next Charter School, because that's where all of our students go. But there are also costs to the district for high school services that are outside of Pinkerton. So we just wanted to break it down for people so that you could see that in our budget for Derry, there are additional costs that are over and above costs for high school students that are outside of Pinkerton. So the cost to the Derry budget for high school services, not related to Pinkerton directly, would be $2,777,970. That's an increase over the current budget of $186,000. Now, what are those costs? They are for out-of-district special education tuition. So any of those high school students that go to specialized programming, and they are at the high school level, and they aren't attending Pinkerton or Next, those are costs that are in our budget. We have transportation for our high school students. So there is not a bus that drives strictly Pinkerton students. All of the Pinkerton student buses take Pinkerton students, and then they go and pick up middle school and elementary school. But there is a cost to that. So funds are allocated to that, that cost item. We also have tutoring that we provide for high school level students. And we also have a facilitator that we, their salary is in our district budget. And that facilitator is solely assigned to our students at Pinkerton Academy. So there are costs outside of Pinkerton Academy with relation to our high school students. Our Next Charter School for next year is going to have 68 Derry students. Their tuition rate is increasing 4% per student, which is $370.25 increase for every student that will be attending Next Charter School. And for those that don't know, the Next Charter School is an alternative school to students attending Pinkerton, located at Gilbert H. Hood. And that's for our grades nine through 12 population. And we also have Pinkerton Academy. There are several areas of Pinkerton Academy with relation to the cost for our students to attend. Every student that attends Pinkerton Academy is, we are charged a tuition rate for those students. And then anything that they receive for services over and above, for example, students who are in resource or students who have special education assistance, all of those costs are add-ons to the regular tuition rate for Pinkerton. Next year, there is an increase of $468 per student attending Pinkerton Academy, which is a 3.5%, 5.4% increase on the tuition rate. So on our budget, that's an increase on the total budget by $785,315.96. Now, during the course of our budget process, we looked at our enrollment, and we use the same methodology that we do for our elementary and middle. We take all our eighth graders, we promote them to ninth, promote all the ninth, tenth, and so on and so forth. And in doing that, and we, we know that as we go through a year, we have students move out, we have, you know, there can be a lot of change for our high school students. So the board and fiscal advisory voted to reduce our projected number of students going to Pinkerton Academy by 30. So that was, had we not done that, this increase would have been a little over $500,000 more added to the budget. And we are taking a chance that the student enrollment will be a little bit less than we were projecting. So for Pinkerton Academy Special Education, each one of their programs increased or decreased a specific amount. So in the interest of trying to put it all on one slide, we just wanted to give you a summary. But students at Pinkerton that receive nursing services over and above their general nursing, tutoring, summer programming, if they have a special ed assistant, those are all add-ons to the budget. And the increase that we're projecting for our special education services at Pinkerton is $534,813. The Maintenance Improvement Plan, as we know, when we worked through the budget process last year, we received fiscal disparity aid from the state. And it was recommended that you use that money for one-time projects. And we used that money for this year's full-day tuition-free kindergarten. And we also used it for some maintenance projects. So we were able to do roof repairs at Gilbert H. Hood for about $350,000. That project's been completed. We also were able to pave here at West Running Brook, Derry Village, and South Range. The first base coat is already down, and in the spring, they will do the top coat. And that was to do all areas of all three of those school parking lots. So when you look at this Maintenance Improvement Plan, this current year for 2021, you can see that the budget was $1.4 million. We were only able to do that because of that one-time fiscal disparity aid money that we received from the state. So for the 2122 budget, you can see a drastic reduction, which the budget next year would be 205,000 proposed maintenance amount. And that's because of that change from the additional funds that we have this year. So we looked and tried to look at our budget and see where we could make additional cuts and come in with a very conservative budget for Maintenance Improvement for next year. And then you can see the subsequent years, there are going to be large increases based on the roof repairs for several of our schools. And those are really our largest cost items. Student transportation, I'm not going to go through all the numbers, but it's basically a 3% increase on the transportation cost. However, we were able to reduce a couple of special education buses. And so the overall transportation line item has decreased $16,021. We just wanted to make you aware of the remaining debt that the district has. We have two bonds still outstanding. We have the Phase 1 and 2 Honeywell Project, which is for the, the energy conservation and upgrade project. And that will mature in 2033. And the Gilbert H. Hood Barca bond, which was the Gilbert H. Hood renovation and the building of Barca, that will mature in fiscal year 2324. So in next year's budget, there is a total decrease in the budget of $34,565. This just a visual pie graph, just to show you where the, where we're spending our budget. You can see that 31.12% of our budget is for salaries, 31.48% is for Pinkerton Academy, and budgets are, benefits are 19.18%. And I won't go through all of them, but those are the big, the biggest areas of our budget. So we just wanted to highlight where those areas are and where the funds are being allocated for the overall budget. So we wanted to break down what all the Warren articles are going to be. When we go to, we're going to talk about the deliberative session and what the Warren articles will be. So we broke each one down. There'll be seven Warren articles. And Warren Article 1, which has no tax impact, and that's going to be to vote in school district, school board members and a school district moderator. Warren Article 2, which is a lot of language on here, but it's basically states, do voters want to vote for the proposed budget? And if, if they do not want the proposed budget, then we would get the default budget. If they were to vote and approve the proposed budget, it's an estimated tax impact of 97 cents on the tax rate for next year. And again, we know that that's a large increase, but we also had that fiscal disparity aid of 3.3 million. And so we're trying to have to make that up. We're going to have that lack of revenue from one year to the next. So we knew there would be a substantial increase, which is why we really had to look at every area of the budget to try to be, still provide a great education and be fiscally responsible to the taxpayers. Warren Article number three is going to be for the teacher's contract, for the DEA. And the estimated amount for that Warren article is $550,924, with an estimated tax impact of 15 cents. And you can see that step 15 would get a 1% increase, steps 1 through 14, they move up a step. And each one of those steps in between is on average a 3.4% increase. There were no increases added to each step in next year's contract. Warren Article 4, no tax impact. It simply just states that if the prior article fails, would we call, would you vote to call a special meeting to address the prior Warren article, which would be the teacher's contract? Warren Article 5 is for our AFSMI Union, which is for all of our assistants. So computer assistants, library assistants, reading assistants. I'm not going to list them all, but there's quite a few of them. And they would be in this bargaining unit. And the total for that Warren article would be $33,173. And both of these Warren articles include salary and benefits, FICA retirement. And the tax impact for this Warren article would be approximately a penny on the tax rate. And that bargaining group as well did not add any increases to their steps, but it would be a 75 cent increase in between movement on those steps. Warren Article 6, again, same as the teachers' union. If that prior article were to be defeated, would we vote to call a special meeting to relook at Warren Article number 5? And the last Warren article, which is new, and this one I am going to read because it is new. Many of you know that we have retained fund balance that's now allowed for school districts. The towns have always had them. They were able to retain portions of their unspent funds at the end of the year. And they could retain it and put them into, you know, save it aside for maintenance or a major paving project or repairs. And school districts were never able to have a true retained fund balance. If we had money left over at the end of the year that was unspent, we always return it to taxpayers. So the last couple of years, RSA 198 was developed, and school districts were then able to retain 2 point, up to 2.5% of your budget to retain for to retain for offsetting taxes or if you had an emergency at your school. For example, you had to do an emergency roof replacement or something like that. But they just updated the RSA, which is enacted in 2020, which allows the district to retain up to 5% of the district's net assessment in any year and allows for the expenditure of any amount retained after the school board first holds a public hearing and further requires the school board to include a report on the retained fund balance in its annual reports to the district. We are recommending that this warrant article be approved because it benefits the school district and will help to levelize any spike in taxation if we're able to start retaining any additional funds at the end of a school year. This is just a budget summary to show what the approved budget is for this current fiscal year and what the proposed budget is for next year. So for Dairy pre-K, so we're starting with our deep students. Up until grade eight, there is a reduction on our overall budget of $718,786. So there's a 1.21% reduction on the overall budget. For Dairy, grade nine through 12, again, not including Pinkerton, there is an increase of $186,992.92, which is a 7.18% increase. Pinkerton Academy for general education and special education combined would be a $1,320,129 increase over the current year, which is a 4.87% increase. Next charter school, $34,433 increase or 5.55% of that line item over the current fiscal year. If you look down to the next line item under federal funds, all of our federal funds are what we call self-funded programs, meaning you can only have expenditures that you're going to have revenue for. So you can never spend more in federal funds than you're going to receive in federal funds. So there is no impact on the tax rate for federal funds. And food service is the same way. It is a self-funded program. The only time district funds are contributed to food service is if the, if parents have outstanding debt that we have not collected. The district has to cover that debt to food service until that, those funds are collected from parents or guardians. So you can see that the general fund is a 92% increase, 0.92% increase over the current budgeted year. And overall, including federal and food service, it's a 0.89% increase for the total budget from this current fiscal year to next year. And we have our important dates, which are deliberative session, which is going to be Saturday, February 6. And, and then the vote for the budget would be Tuesday, March 9. And I think we're going to, I'm going to give it back to Derek now.
Thank you, Jane. All right, is there any discussion from school board members or administration or potentially fiscal advisory members at this point before we open up to the public? Okay, I think we have, Mr. Krieger has joined us this evening and will operate the lights for us. So we welcome all of you folks here to come and speak towards the budget if you would like. We request you keep your time to three minutes, just so that we can get everyone through in an expeditious fashion. Mr. Krieger will run their lights when you hit that, the yellow, please start to wrap up. And if you come up, just please give your name and address, please.
It's on. Green light's on. Hi, I'm Megan Neve. I live at 23 Walnut Hill Road in Dairy. And I, I had a couple of things to say. I want to start with the fact that I love Dairy and I love what you guys do for Dairy and I, I love being a part of Dairy. I love working here and raising my children here and being part of the community here. I love it. I also want to tell you that I'm really proud to be part of Dairy. And I'm proud of all the hard work that my colleagues put in. I'm so proud of the hard work that you guys put in. And I just had a couple of issues with our budget this year. And my heart is breaking because I can't imagine Dairy being the third-largest school district without an actual librarian. That would be embarrassing and it would be detrimental to our children. I also, I can't even, Dairy, I mean, we choose love. Officially, we choose love. And we do so much. And I can't even begin to say how, like, we work so hard, all of us, this whole community. And I grew up really poor. And there's lots of people in Dairy that struggle like I did as a kid. When I was in first grade, I was homeless. And without the home-to-school coordinator that helped me, I could never be here helping the kids I help in Dairy and being a part of the community in Dairy and raising my children here in Dairy. And to think that we would lose Alicia or Lee is just, I just can't even imagine because they're so important. I work with Alicia mostly because of being at South Range. And I've even worked with her. I know I can use the homeschool coordinators as a resource just as a mom in this town. And Alicia helps me so often, always right away, always as soon as I need it, to help the kids that need it the most. These are our biggest at-risk kids. Mental health in our town and our community and our state is so, such a huge issue. And our homeschool coordinator helps with that so much. And keeping these kids safe, keeping them fed and clothed and warm. And I can't imagine anything, I can't imagine not having these positions. We have asked the teachers to give up their raises. We did it in the last recession. You guys said you would remember. As a teacher and a community member and a mom in this town, I have to ask a really hard question. I have to ask for some people in this room and in this town to be heroes. And I have to ask them to look at their, their raises. We have people in our administration that could be heroes right now and could save, save some positions that are so important to this district if they looked at their, their increase in pay and took it, took this opportunity to, oh, my time's up. I took this opportunity to not take a raise for a, for a year, for a couple of years like the teachers did, to do something for these kids, to give back and be the heroes that we need you to be. Because we need these, we need, need, need these positions. And you have it in your hands to help with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Jake Phillip, physical education teacher at South Range School. Been in the district now 26 years. It's a pleasure to speak in front of all of you tonight. Megan's very emotional, please, I second. I know learning, growing, and connecting, building blocks of our school district, and I love it. It's awesome. It's what our families need. I, I love that slogan. We try to live it every day. I, let's think about that now, okay? Whether it's technology, physical education, equipment, whatever, what's going to help the families more than going one-on-one with mom or dad that need it or the child that needs it? I've known Alicia over 20 years. I don't know Lee as well, but I know they're professional, the way you hired them. And she's been doing it. I, when she comes in the building, I just see her in the office sometimes, I see Alicia. Woo! You want this lady on your staff, okay? She lights it up, vibrant, professional, warm, friendly. That's what we need more of in America, okay? I've never been married myself, but I've had to go to her with my stuff. And she's helped me out more than once through the years, for sure. And I trust her. The families trust her, and I'm sure they trust Lee. I, again, I'm an emotional person. You know, I'm just going to lay it all out there, and she is able, she connects with you. And again, I'm sure Lee's the exact same way. We need it. These ladies are hustling all over multiple buildings. Again, take my budget for the next 20 years if you want to. And if it, if it goes the wrong way, you can come and work for me, okay? I'm going to, I have a few ideas how to make some money. I want them on my staff. And regardless, you know, again, come and talk to me about giving up a percent or whatever you're going to pay me next year, if that's the way it needs to go. She's a wonderful woman, and I know she's great friends with Lee, and I know they're the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Rachel Logan. And I have written what I want to say, so I don't forget anything. Alicia Triplet has been a very important person in mine and my children's lives. Our family moved to Dairy where we knew no one and had no family when my youngest was in kindergarten. And was, and we were very soon, my husband and I went through divorce. Alicia was always there to help us and was particularly important to my daughter for years when she was struggling in elementary school. I don't know what we would have done without her. And I still know to this day, even though my daughter is now in high school, that if any of us ever needed a resource or help or just a kind ear, she would be there for us, no question. She's one of the most important people we have been lucky enough to have in our lives. And the Dairy School District should recognize how lucky you are to have her. During a normal year, I would be incensed that you would propose taking away a vital resource that directly benefits our children and families' health and welfare, but especially during a global pandemic. How can you thoughtfully come to the conclusion right now that our kids need less resources when there is documented proof that there is a rise in mental illness, substance abuse, suicidal ideation, symptoms of anxiety disorder, symptoms of depressive disorder, symptoms of trauma and stress-related disorders, and PTSD? These were on the increase even before COVID and have exponentially gotten worse. They're on the rise in our general population, which means that children are suffering as well as their families, to whom there has been a huge increase in pressure and responsibilities added for their children's education and for which they are mostly not prepared. The teachers have also had to switch gears and have a huge increase in responsibility, which has been very difficult. These positions are not only a benefit to the families and our children of our community, but they're part of the vital support team to our teachers. Without the ability of the school community to have direct contact with kids every day and with the increase in social isolation, there's a greater risk of missing things like depression, malnourishment, abuse, suicidal thoughts, and more. There have been, there has been a need to increase mental health and social work resources in our schools and community for years. And now you have proposed to decrease access. This does not make any sense. It is already unconscionable that we only have two people in these positions covering seven schools. We have two people covering 3,000 students. Two people. Just some of my resources for this information are the National Education Association, the National Alliance on Mental Illness, the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, the National Association of School Psychologists, and the National Association of Social Workers. Are you saying to all of us that the information from these organizations is not of importance to our school district or the children and families of Dairy? I would really like to know where you did your research that helped you come to the conclusion that this was a prudent and well-thought-out decision? And I'd also like to say that there are, I'm sure, a number of people that would like to be here tonight to say this to you personally as well, but that can't be here because of their situations. And those are situations which these two women have been helping with. And I would like you to think about the number of people that would like to speak that can't be here.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Laurie Fleming, and I live at 3 South Range Road. And I am a parent, and I am also an employee of the district. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the Dairy Nursing Team. All of us are in agreement with what I'm about to say. It is mine and our belief that the school board should seriously consider the importance of the role of the home-to-school coordinators. Four years ago, the position was cut from three full-time positions to now two. The limiting the position completely would be a great detriment to our district's ability to assist families with casework, services needed to optimize their educational and social progress, most especially in this time of a worldwide pandemic where employment, housing, food, and even emotional stability are at a higher risk than has ever been seen in decades. I would like to reference Maslow's basic hierarchy of needs. Well before any person can ever become productive and successful, whether it be a school or the community, their physiological and safety needs need to be addressed. These include food, shelter, clothing, employment, access to community resources, and physical and mental health needs. The coordinators who cover over 3,000 students and their families in our district consult and collaborate most, almost daily with the multi-disciplinary team of over the eight schools, including nursing, counselors, special education, teachers, administrators, and most importantly, the families. The social-emotional needs of our students have risen dramatically over recent years, and it is one of the school board's goals to make everyone feel connected to create lifelong learners. The nursing team strongly feels that the role that they play in our schools cannot be replaced or even duplicated by adding more responsibilities to the counseling or nursing team. We feel it will be the students and their families who will be adversely affected and impacted by this decision. We implore you to reconsider cutting this most valuable resource whose ultimate goal is to assist and collaborate for the well-being of our families and students. I would also like to say personally that our home-to-school coordinators, it's been difficult to kind of describe what they do because they bring their own expertise to what they're doing and make that personal connection. And they each have expertise in different areas, and they collaborate so well. I can't imagine not being, having them to work with. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello there, Melissa Fox, and I live at 5 Lindley Drive. I've known Alicia for about six years. I'm emotional because I'm thinking of not having her resource. The reason I met her was, the reason I met her was, six years ago, my husband at the time, he had tongue cancer. And that woman saved my sanity by visiting my house, helping me to find resources, helping me with my three kids, like telling me, like, resources that are available to me. I was a stay-at-home mom, had to stay home, take care of my ill husband, nursing a baby, two little kids, one in deep, you know? That was a terrible time. And if any of you have ever faced that, you know the hell that I was living, okay? And, and then Alicia visits my house. And because she's Alicia, and she's crazy and funny and awesome, she brightens up my day and makes it so I can get on. Anything I needed, I, she was an email away. And she was, despite having 3,000 kids in the district and her sharing that role with someone else, she got back to me. She knew I needed it. She, she helped with the angel meals. He was going through chemo, radiation, surgeries. She's stopping at my house, throwing chicken nuggets at me. Hey, here's dinner. I didn't have to cook for a couple of days. Years go by, he's fine, he made it. But then domestic violence came into our lives. Again, Alicia enters. Alicia went to court with me. She was my support, she was my rock. She was my support. She was my rock. I recently gained the courage to go through a divorce. She again, helping me, helping my kids. One of my kids is here with me tonight. If you do that and remove those two positions, anyone in my shoes in this district is going down. They're not gonna have that. Our guidance counselor, Mike Oger, I love that guy. He's great for my kids, but he's for my kids. He knows my kids in and out. He checks on me. Hey ma, go grab an ice cream. Ditch the kids. But that's, that's the extent of it with Mike and that's, that's his role. His role is my kids. Her role is me and how I can care for those kids and make sure they're safe, happy and fed. And she did that. So you can't cut that, that position. You're doing a disservice to all of Derry if you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Darlene Morrison, 55 Brady Ave. Everyone has worked hard this year and like I've said before, I've gotten up here and spoke about budget before, even before this budget came out. I wish we never had to cut anything from the school budget, especially now, but everything's attached to a dollar sign. During this whole budget process, you, the school administration, has been tasked with creating a budget to be fiscally responsible to the taxpayers in this town. You then task your building administration to make cuts to help meet the budget demands. Before you task the building administration with making consolidations or suggested cuts, have you as an administrative team asked yourself the same questions? Where could we consolidate up above? Where could we make cuts first as to not impact positions that work closer to the students? A few school board meetings ago, a school board member brought up not giving the full 3% raise to the school administration to help meet the budget number. My question is, have you considered not taking that full 3% raise, which is automatically embedded in the operating budget and moving that money to the building and staff level to help keep positions that work closer to the students? When you eliminate positions from a school building, you only eliminate the person and not the roles and responsibilities within the school. You then push those responsibilities onto other people with already full plates, adding more stress to an already stressed system. As an administrative leadership team, you not only have a job to fiscally, be fiscally responsible to the taxpayers in the town, but also responsible to the students in the schools. I have said it before, when considering cuts to a budget, you really should be cutting furthest from the students first. It doesn't make sense to continue to cut positions closest to the students when you have some of the highest paid salaries embedded in the operating budget that get increases every year that the operating budget passes. Our kids need more support now more than ever. So again, my question is for the current school administration, have you considered what a school, what a school board member recommended and not taking the full 3% raise, which is automatically embedded in the operating budget if it passes, and moving that money to the building and staff level to help keep these positions that are closer to the students? When I look at the staff changes, it was mentioned that it was looked at in every area of the budget. There's one area of the budget that is not on here and that is the SAU level. There's no mention of where you could help consolidate up there. I know this isn't the first time I've mentioned this. I've mentioned it before, but in the end, we, in the end, we need to stop cutting closest to the students first. They need that support. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll try not to speak. My name's Dr. Catherine Conti and I am a psychologist and I am based out of West Running Book, but I facilitate services in all schools or help facilitate services in all schools. I also wrote down some things to say just to consider. This information is mostly based on data. The home-to-school coordinating positions bring a very unique position to the school districts. Derry is no exception to that. They are trained mental health professionals who assist various needs throughout every school. These positions are instrumental in furthering the mission of schools by being the bridge for families to the community. They help the families with the when, the where and the how to obtain services to get their basic needs met. As we know, family systems, especially during a global pandemic, are in a state of change. Until it becomes stabilized, whatever that form may look like, students' unmet physical and emotional needs will continue to interfere with their learning, their ability to adjust in the school setting, leading to various academic struggles and internalizing and externalizing behaviors in schools. Just to give you some examples, as I know some of you are familiar with, but maybe some people at home are not, these positions participate in evaluation meetings, special education meetings, team meetings, family wraparound meetings, and they assess the students' needs from the home and the community perspective to ensure the students are getting their basic needs met. They provide intervention strategies for parents and help alleviate family stress by being that bridge and knowing the system, the mental health system in our community and the education system in our community. And they are the connections for these families. They obtain and coordinate community resources to meet the needs that would otherwise go unmet. Just to give you some data based on evidence of mental health and psychology for public schools, counselors in the district provide services in school. They're the Band-Aids to make sure the kids are here, they have support and they move on to their classes to access that learning. The school psychologist position, generally speaking, does testing. Both of those positions, Derry does a fairly good job at keeping with research and providing the necessary FTE, the full-time positions to support the needs in the district. The social worker or home-to-school coordinator positions are less so. The data based on just general education, 28 to 3,000 students is upwards of 10. We have two. That doesn't take into account that with increased services, so special education or free and reduced lunch programs, those families increase it to one staff for every 50 students. That's just the social worker field. Because it's different. We all know that school funding is limited. I can appreciate that. I worked in the business industry for 12 years. You guys have a very difficult position to put yourselves in to try and figure out how to manage the budget every year. And I respect everything that you do. Given that we're in a global pandemic, given the fact that the repercussions of this pandemic on mental health will go on for years for our families, again, based in research, we know this, when trauma impacts families, they need the continued and sustained positions in the education system to support those needs. I think that removing these two positions is just, it's a short-sighted way of trying to manage a budget. That is, I'm not saying it's not difficult. It's extremely difficult. But these two positions are necessary for the education system. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Leigh Holder. I am one of the home school coordinators. I am a licensed clinical mental health counselor and state supervisor and I have been in the district for four years. During the fiscal advisory committee on December 14th, the proposal to eliminate our two positions was brought forward. It was assumed that the guidance counselors would be able to fill our roles. Questions were asked about these positions that were not able to be completely answered and we would like to be able to clarify this information for you as their role is a crucial part in providing support to the most vulnerable families in the Derry School District. Our biggest concern is that the students and families we serve will no longer have the supports that we provide. When families are in crisis from job loss, food, housing insecurity, childcare needs, lack of transportation, medical coverage, we are there to support them and find resources that they need. Never has there been a more important, in the last year during the COVID-19 crisis, the mental health needs of our students and families are at an all-time high. Some of the general duties of our position do include meeting parents in the home and in the community, assisting with paperwork and documents needed for the school, which is an integral part of helping students access those school resources. We help increase the parents' understanding and participation with barriers for the child's success in school, assist families with securing basic needs such as food, housing, fuel, medical care, health insurance and offering short-term parent education while they are waiting for other services to begin. We attend school meetings to support families and help foster a positive relationship with the school and improve the students' attendance. We connect the school community to local organizations in various programs such as the End 68 Hours of Hunger Program, Backpack Program, Winter Co-Drive, Holiday Assistance and Food Drives, all of which benefit the Derry students and families. We estimate that we assist approximately 150 families each or 300 combined each year. It is very hard to track because some families we work with for years and years and some people we are with them for a limited time. We do serve seven schools and the D program and we are available to any school at any time and we have the flexibility to be available to many schools throughout the day. It's important to note that no other role in the district allows for uninterrupted connection with families from kindergarten through eighth grade and beyond. This is a tribute to the well-established positive connections with students and families that we have developed. I implore you to reconsider cutting these resources that will no longer be available to these families if this position were to be eliminated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Thank you to everybody that came to support us. My name's Alicia Triplet. I'm the other home-to-school coordinator. I work with Leigh Holder. And I've been in the district for 21 years. I'm a licensed marriage and family therapist and I've served the district for, like I said, 21 years and I've had, I've worked at every school except for Hood. So I've been here for a long time, had a great, great job here. Last year, our position was also on the table to be cut. And it was quickly off the table because one of the things that one of the school board members had said is that were the connections to the families. So we were, it didn't go any further, much to our relief for our families and our students. This year, I'm sitting here right now asking you to reconsider what's happening to our students and families, especially during the COVID crisis and all the information you heard from Dr. Conti, from the families that we've worked with, Lori Fleming, staff in the district. We need to have this position for our kids and our families. They have to. The supports that we offer cannot be passed off to guidance, passed off to the nurses, administration. It's really important to keep their separate roles. There's a little bit of overlap like many things in the schools. Certainly, they're not a duplication of services. It's when you're in an airplane, you put the mask on the parent first and then they can help the child. And that's how Leigh and I operate. We see kids and we work with kids. We work mostly with families because without the families, the children aren't gonna make it. They're not gonna have the support that they need. I implore you as well to reconsider cutting these resources at a time when it's just violently needed for our kids and our families. I know there's some administrators here tonight and I certainly invite any of them to come up and speak to the state of their school and kind of what their opinion is about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
How you doing? My name is Joe Turner. I live at Colletts Grove. I've been a resident for 22 years. Both my sons have gone through the school system. My youngest is autistic and I'm a single dad. It's been very difficult. And I was given Ms. Alicia's information, her phone number, from the SAU during a time where my son decided not to go to school anymore. He decided not to go on the bus. Behavioral issues as he was getting bigger. We were on power for six weeks. Thanks to Ms. Alicia, she contacted certain entities that helped us along and it's still a long road. And I'll be honest with you. I chose Derry to buy home because the buyer sat high. It's a wonderful school system and I have no complaints at all. I just couldn't imagine without the home-to-school coordinator where my family would be. And I'm certain there's plenty of us. I want to thank you for your time and please reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name's Judy Williams. I live at 150 North Shore Road in Derry. I am very disappointed that the school district would love to get rid of these positions because they don't understand what our students need. They, this is a big, big change for our families. I have worked with the social workers for more than 15 years. I've been in this building for a very long time and there are things that these students would not have if these social workers were not here. And I know that the title has changed, but this job has not changed. It's the same thing. You have families who don't have food, clothing, shelter, necessities to get through life and when you have someone that might be your lifeboat, these ladies come up to you and help you to get through the day. And it's a struggle to watch them possibly not be here because there are so many families that need them. Our district, if we cut this position, how is it that all the other districts in New Hampshire have social workers in Derry School District? One of the largest districts in the state would like to cancel having social workers at all. It is just a disappointment in every way and I know the families that I've worked with on the Derry Community Fund would not have the resource of the school district as well. You know, we provide food and shelter and gas cards. People are homeless. They don't have any way to get any food or have a place to live and they can call us and they collaborate with us every single day. So my thing is, is why would we take that away from the children in this district when they need it the most at this point? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Meg Moosparry, 12 Kendopon Road. I did have a question. What is the tax impact per thousand by keeping the three positions?
The tax impact is approximately three cents for every 100,000. So if you were to take all three of those positions, it would be... Nine cents.
So for nine cents per thousand, we're under a default budget. I'm not quite sure why we're cutting these three positions. The social, the social workers slash home-to-school coordinators are a significant piece of the, you've heard the parents talk. People who can't be here tonight have... who can't be here tonight have all posted comments on Facebook. These, these two women do a lot to make sure that the most disenfranchised people, the most disenfranchised children, make sure that they are taken care of. As a special ed facilitator in the district, there's many times when I've had to call on either Lee or Alicia to get paperwork signed or to go check on a family for me. So their role is significant. Having worked in a social work position a lifetime ago, I understand what they do on a daily basis and for nine cents per thousand, I think, as people have said, we're cutting from the kids and families. And one woman said that, you know, the counselors will take care of her children, but the home-to-school coordinators make sure that her family is intact. And I think that's a significant piece and especially as someone pointed out, this is a global pandemic. We need not to be cutting these kind of positions as we're going through this unchatted waters, difficult. And I mean, there's so many words that we can put on this, but it's not something that we need, I don't think we need to be doing, not for nine cents per thousand. We need to find some other way to make the money. You know, there's been other suggestions made. But cutting the two home-to-school coordinators and the librarian are cutting the people that are closest to children. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Does the board have any discussion they'd like to entertain before we close the public hearing? Yes.
So I want to go back to the questions that I had at the
Could you bring the mic a little closer? Because I think that's
I've got lots of buzz behind me. I want to go back to the questions that I had at the Fiscal Advisory Committee. Which, you know, I've heard they serve 3,000 students. I've heard they serve 150. I've heard they serve 300. And to me, if they serve two and they make a difference, that's fabulous. That, you know, that's what we want, right? So I need to understand how this is going to work with our counselors. Because I know people will do what they have to do. And they'll serve our children and our families the way they have to, no matter what. So how, Chris, I don't know if you remember my questions. Can we go back to the Fiscal Advisory and, you know, how these, how it's going to work or how it could work, how it will work? Sorry, this keeps falling off. How will it work with counselors taking over these roles or meshing these roles with theirs? And while I have a job description, the job description doesn't seem to match everything that has been said. So I'm not sure, you know, I'm not sure where, where this is, where the level ground is. Can you help?
I can try. As far as, yeah, the job descriptions, what you were given was a comparison of the job descriptions along with the job descriptions that show the counselors do, do similar roles at times. I think what you heard here tonight was more of the roles with the families outside of the school and maybe, maybe a bit more separate from the individual student needs. And that connection that happens with the counselors, with the families about how to support their child or children in the school setting and how can they support their child or children in the home setting and make that connection between home and school. That's something that the counselors do do. What you heard more tonight was the supports that the home-to-school coordinators provide to the parents or family members. So largely, the focus will still be on, for the counselors, on supporting the students and the family's ability and capacity to be able to support the students coming to school, attending school regularly, being part of the school community, engaging the students by, you know, reaching out to those families and making those connections. It might not be in the exact same way, however, those connections would be made by the counselors. I think the other, in many other instances, those are connections that are being made by a number of other people as well. Teachers, classroom teachers, special ed teachers, at times paraprofessionals, administrators. I know our assistant principals and principals oftentimes function as that connection with the family. So they would continue to, you know, all those same people would continue to support those connections. One of the other areas that I think we're going to have to look to increase the capacity is with the community agencies themselves establish and maintain a greater connection. That's something we've worked on with CLM, with DCYF, with the other community agencies. We're going to have to find other ways. And that would include the counselors. It would include psychologists. It would include administrators, all in helping to increase how we foster those connections and how we maintain those connections with those agencies more routinely. And the specific, the specificity of those connections for individual families might not be the same as it was, but we need to establish the ways in which we direct our families to accessing the resources through a variety of efforts, a combination of people. The other part being, and we've worked on this already this year, is we need to better establish sort of our force at each school, who would assist with the fundraising and the charitable donations, which, you know, many people are involved in that as participants, whether it's that they're making donations or whether they're helping to organize those things. We're going to have to increase that capacity as well and really, you know, establish teams and individuals at each school that can pick up some of those pieces. Does that answer your question?
Yes, and I've been involved with all seven PTAs who have, you know, supported angel meals and clothing drives and clothing swaps and, you know, many, many things that help families. So I have one more question. The changes that the town made to public health, did that impact our schools? Did that add to the, and this was a year ago, I think, in their budget? Did that change or add to the work of home-school coordinators and counselors and, you know, teachers? I mean, like you said, everybody has a piece of of our children and their needs. And whatever crops up that minute in that day, somebody is there to, to help. So I'm wondering about the changes that were made at the town level and the move from one space to another and how that impacted us. And I don't know if you know that answer. They might, but you may not.
I don't know if I can speak to that specifically, but I will say this, and I, I don't know that anybody here would disagree. Anytime that there's a decrease in any level of resources or services in the community, at the state level, federal level, at the community level, it sure feels like it falls on the school district to pick up the pieces for those. I oftentimes refer to us as the ultimate human resource, or ultimate human services agency. Where we've, we've become responsible for so many other things. Was it Jamie Volmer, Mary Ann, that the poster that has all of the, you know, 200 other things that have been added to school districts since reading, writing, and arithmetic, you know, since we were founded? So I can't speak specifically the town side of things and what was reduced, but it sure feels like anytime something is reduced, it falls on the school district.
So I had another question. One of the things that is confusing me is I hear both of you saying that one of the things you spend a lot of time doing is being in the community or in people's homes. But what we were told is that that is a smaller part of the job, being in the community or in people's homes. And it would seem to me that there are certain roles that the guidance counselors and others could help with, though I am worried about how much they could help because I know in middle school, people are writing their name on a board to talk to these counselors and they may get 20 minutes because there's so, so much want. So my question is, how, if you really are spending a lot of time, and I, I'm not on the ground with you, so I'm not doubting you, I'm just asking, if you really are in the community and in people's homes, I don't see that as something we can easily replicate with the other staff we have. So what would be our plan to address that gap?
Actually, we've reduced and purposefully. I directed the home-to-school coordinators not to be in people's homes. You know, obviously because of safety and the safety concerns, and that goes back a couple of years now, but in the past year, you know, reiterated that directive and they followed that directive.
I have more of a comment other than a question. During the budget, I voiced a little concern about the responsibilities going on to the guidance counselors that I feel are already almost put to their max anyway. And the responsibilities, we have said, can be doled out to different places, whether it be the teachers, the principals, the nurses. During this pandemic, we have asked a lot of our teachers, of our principals, of our nurses, of our guidance. And I just wonder how much more we can put on there before then next year we have to hire, we end up having to hire our coordinators, our home-to-school coordinators back, or guidance, or more. And in that time, how many families will fall through the cracks before we realize that?
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, last chance. Anyone else from the public like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Meg Morris Perry again. Chris, I heard what you said about, you know, the kids versus families. But I think the biggest piece that the home-school coordinators take care of are our families and there is no replacing them. I mean, I reach out as a special ed facilitator to families. My special ed teachers reach out. But what they do is different. And although when they say that they go to people's homes, they may go to their home to drop off a bag of food. They may meet them at Burger King to give them the gas cards from, from the community center. There is no replacing them. It, it's, it's as simple as that. There's no replacing what they do. They do things that I can't do as a special ed facilitator or my special ed teachers can do as a special ed teacher, a classroom teacher can do. No one can do what they do. They have the ability to do more. They have the connections. And we can't all make the connections that Chris is talking about. I have connections at CLM. But they have more connections than I do. And what I need you folks to understand is they provide a vital service that cannot be replaced by our guidance counselors. The guidance counselors need to do the things in the school setting that we need for our kids to be successful. What the two home-school coordinators do is they provide the services to families so that those kids can be successful in school. It's the Maslow's hierarchy of needs. If they're not getting something at home, then they can't come into school and be successful. And it's like putting food and bread on the, food and water on the table. That's what these guys do. They've coordinated the 68 Hours of Hunger. They've provided support to parents. You heard one person say that they provided support when she, her husband had cancer. There are all these things that I can't do as, as a member of the staff, but they can. They have the leeway to do that. So before you vote on this budget, you really do need to know that these two positions are extremely vital to all of the staff in this district and to not only the staff, but to our children and to our families.
Jake Phillips, I, I, I love what you guys do. Very tough decisions and I've known, Chris, I've known you forever. You do an awesome job. And I respect what's going on tonight. How are we going to have other people that don't know our kids from another agency where we have people that know the families now? If one kid dies, that's, that's on, that's on us. And I'm sorry to be really that blunt, but if we lose one life where it could have been saved, baby, you know, and I love Mr. Turner's story. That was to the heart. They know the people. We don't have to get it from somebody else who doesn't know, who has to create a bond. They know it for eight years already. Come on, make the right decision here. Make the right decision.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Who's that? Brenda seconded by Jess? Was there a motion to close the public hearing? Okay. There is quite an echo. Okay, so motion, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay. Some discussion and if anybody has any proposals?
Derek, can you repeat yourself because we're having a hard time hearing. Sorry.
Does anybody have any further discussion or does anybody want to present a motion?
Chair, I think if no one else has any other discussion, I think it's prudent to move forward in motion to move the budget forward. The protocol would be that if there were any changes that are sought, the motion is seconded and that is the time for discussion. Questions were asked by the board, but that's the protocol. Thank you.
Is that your motion?
Chair, I make a motion to move the budget forward as presented, please.
Motion by Lynn?
Calls for a second.
I'll second the motion. Discussion.
Chair, to that point, the discussions that were brought forward tonight in public are understandable. But I think as time goes on, questions are asked during the budget sessions. People deliberate. The Fiscal Advisory Committee deliberates. And I think one of the things that we look at as a board and as a Fiscal Advisory Committee is what we think would be acceptable to the voters, but also what is manageable by the administration for the budget that is presented. Essentially, we try to control the budget in a way that we think we can manage that isn't going to be rejected by voters who are in a difficult time as well. And I think that's what gets lost in the discussion. I think one of the points that's made is that why are we doing these cuts if they're only worth nine cents? And will we do them because we're trying to keep a threshold that we think that even if the voters object to the warrant that's put forward, that at least we have managed, we know what we're managing. The administration knows what it's managing. And it's not something that can be harmed by the voters at the poll. So that's what the review is. And I think that's what we've reviewed during this last fall session. We understand that there's some stresses on this. I think some of the discussion points are not just that when the board and the Fiscal Advisory Committee deliberate on this. It's not just the warrant regarding the operation of the district, but it is the consideration of all warrants that are being put before the district. Those are all the warrants that were produced this evening. So when you look at the total of all those warrants and what they multiply, what they come up to, I think that's a consideration that is also given. So that's my thought on the motion. Anybody else can chime in if they'd like. It's not without compassion to the pleas or the to the pleas or the comments of the folks that have come up tonight, but just understand that there's a management side of this, that we're trying to make sure that the greater majority of the students are taken care of and provided. And it's not to diminish the points that were brought forward here. I rest, thank you.
And I fully appreciate the management piece of it. I also appreciate the fact that our administration was given a directive, and they did what they had to do via the directive that they were given. I'm going to say I don't agree with it right now. When I was, a long time ago, before I was even on the school board, I had a long conversation with someone who was on this board, a long time ago, Barbara Yelland. And I thought about her words, sorry, now I'm going to get emotional, her words to me way back then, before I was on the board. And she said to me, when you are on the board, because I know you will be, always remember, when it stops being about children, it's time to leave. It's been a hard year, honestly, a really hard year, trying to always do what's right for kids and staff, always. A lot of really, really hard decisions have been made this year, and this was one of them, at the fiscal advisory committee and by our administrators, because they were given a directive. I don't agree with it, and I'm going to amend Lynn's motion and ask to have the homeschool coordinators' salaries put back in.
To Lynn's point about it is a long budget process, where things are brought up, administration does what we ask, they bring it back, we flesh it out, we have presentations, we come in. This one was an 11th hour ad, this one was at the last meeting. We had presentations on the NECC program, we had presentations on facilities. When this was first brought up, I've only known Alicia as a social worker. I didn't even know that the home-to-school coordinator was the social worker position when it first was brought up. I think that I didn't fully understand the responsibilities going into this. I understand that we have a very difficult decision coming into this, we have a large tax impact, but I don't feel that those two positions, in the middle of a pandemic, when we are so worried about mental health, are where we need to make the cuts.
So I too have been through many budget processes and seen the pain of trying to make a budget lineup. But listening to what you folks said tonight, and considering what I've been told on both sides by what the needs are, I think we need to find a compromise that brings together different needs. Because if a child doesn't have, if the families don't have the support they need, those children don't come to school ready to learn. But we also need a budget that we know the community can support. So those are two diverging needs. Now, we brought up a lot of different proposals to try to address this. There was a proposal that looked at cutting increases for administrators, and that was understandably a difficult one to bring up. But tonight, I'm going to propose a compromise. We really need at least one of these positions. So maybe if everyone can give a little, we can find a way to make this work. Right now, administrators are getting 3%. Making people give up everything when they've had a hard year is tough, but on the flip side, there's families these people serve who don't, they don't have anything to give up, because they're just struggling to feed. But could we find a compromise? Could we go from three to two? Would that allow us to keep one of these people? I think because of the needs, while having another, the librarian here would be nice, that one I'm okay with. I think we just can't do that right now. But I think we need at least one social worker and maybe give a little on both sides, and I'm willing to be open to other options.
Lynn, my protocol specialist here, Brenda has proposed an amendment. Do we need to second that amendment and further that along before we consider any other discussion? Okay. All right, so we have an amendment, I believe Brenda, is to remove the reduction of two home-to-school coordinators from the budget. Okay, and seconded by Jess. Any further discussion on the amended motion? Okay, we'll go for a roll call of vote. Brenda? Jess? Lynn?
No.
That was a no, thank you. Erica?
Yes.
Michelle, are you out there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Mr. Minkle, can you turn that up, please?
Can you?
Gotcha.
There I am. I am a yes.
Okay, Chair votes yes. So the motion has passed to add back the two home-to-school coordinators. Are there any other motions people entertain?
Mr. Chair, I think the call is to make a formal motion on that as opposed to an amendment. Before doing so, I think the discussion was brought forward about trying to, what was that you said, Erica? Compromise, that's right.
I was saying a little give and take, potentially reducing the increases from 3 to 2% would reduce the overall increase to bringing back those positions.
So my recommendation is if there's any further negotiation on it, that be done before the final motion is done and voted on. I think you'd see the direction the board wants to go, if there's any last comment, and then the motion should be formalized. Thank you.
Do you need another motion? Is that the problem?
Yeah, you'll have to, I think, read your formalized motion and then have it voted on, as opposed to just amended. But my recommendation is if there's any further conversation on the matter, that it be resolved before you do the motion. It goes to Erica's compromise request, and if there's nothing further to add, then I think you're all set to make a motion, Brenda.
Is there any further discussion? Anybody? Thank you.
You're all set.
Okay, I will make the motion to, so Derek, you, let me just start over. You worded it a different way than I do. How do you want me to word this? Do you want me to word it that I want them put back into the budget, or I want the reduction removed from the budget?
That's a good question. I guess we would make a motion to add back in two home-to-school coordinators at a total cost of $223,102.93.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Jess. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Michelle? Thank you.
Can you hear me?
I gotcha.
Okay. Way to go, Bren.
Is that, are you in favor of the motion?
I'm in favor of the motion.
Thank you. Brenda?
Yes.
Jess? Lynn?
No.
Erica?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion has passed. Okay, any other discussions or motions? Okay, seeing none. We will vote, Jane, can you give us the final number then? I believe the next thing we have to do then is to vote on what the actual number that will go on the warrant.
Yep, just have to give me one minute here.
No problem.
Just a minute, Chair, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am?
Um, a question, amended for the, I think it's a little, I think, I just don't want you to get, you want to ask, I'm going to say.
I appreciate the question.
increase the budget by the 223, to add it back in?
That's correct.
Okay. So the new proposed budget that would go on a warrant article would be, I'll just say the numbers right up, 93,151,401.79.
Okay, and if we vote to change the number, the warrant isn't finalized yet, so if we vote to have the warrant show this number, that will be the, our formalizing of the warrant article, is that correct?
I'm sorry, I have a hard time hearing you, I'm sorry.
Sorry. So if we vote that to accept the new number for the warrant, that would then finalize the warrant and move it forward in the proper legal manner?
Correct.
Okay. So the motion would be to shall the school district raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amounts set forth on the budget posted with the warrant, or as amended by vote of the first session for the purposes set forth therein, totaling $93,151,401.79. Should this article be defeated, the 2021-2022 operating budget shall be $93,3669.06, which is the same as last year with certain adjustments required by previous action of the school district or by law, or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 401310 and 16 to take up the issue of a revised operating budget only.
Now, the proposed budget would be what you mentioned. I would just have to check with Gordon to see whether I have to add those positions back to the default. So if you can approve the warrant without the default, I just want to make sure whether they have to go back in there or not.
With their existing staff now, right?
They would probably go back.
It would go back to the default as well.
So I'd have to add those back to the default number, so.
So I'm going to choose Brenda to read it this time?
Let me add them into the default so you can get the accurate. Now, if they're existing positions, they would be in default, so I just have to add them. Just took me a minute to.
We're math.
Took me a minute to think about it. Actually, just hold that thought for a second, because I have to make sure that I didn't take them out for default. Yeah, so they would have already been included in default. So the default would stay the same.
Okay, good, so we don't have to reread that whole thing. Do you want to?
I'm really not sure what we need. I just want the budget to reflect those positions, the 223.
Yep.
So what more do we need to do besides what I've already done?
Someone just needs to make the motion, or you can state what I just said as the motion.
Yes. I thought I already did that. Didn't I say so moved?
I couldn't hear you. So you said so moved.
Yeah, I did say so. When you gave all the numbers, that's why I was confused. I'm like, I thought we already did this, okay.
Thank you, it's very hard.
You got it.
So we have a motion on the table. Brenda with a motion, second please?
Jessica's already seconded.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
It's hard to hear you.
Okay, seeing none. Brenda? Jessica?
Yes.
Lynn?
This is the same motion? Yes. No.
Erica?
Yes.
Michelle?
Can you hear me? You got me?
Gotcha.
Hello? Yes.
Thank you. Chair votes yes. The warrant will be finalized with those positions. Okay.